All right. Good evening. I would like to call to order the September 22nd, 2020 meeting, the regular school board meeting of the Columbia Heights Public Schools. If you would, please rise with me if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. Once again, good evening. Before we get going, I want to read to you an announcement. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay home and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. School board members are reminded to mute their microphones or phone when they're not speaking. School board members wishing to speak should raise their hand without waiting to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted via roll call. Each board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded, and access to this recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. Thank you for indulging me in that. Molly, would you please do the roll call?
Certainly. Severson.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Lewis, here. Larkin. A Samurai. Superintendent Stenvik.
Here.
All right. Thank you so much, Molly. Our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong. Sorry, did I? Each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. I was actually reading it over my head. I was like, there it is, right behind me. And I distracted myself. So there you have it. It's right there if you're watching on TV. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We will move on to the agenda, approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Looking for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
It's all moved.
Lorian? Second?
Second.
Molly, second. Great. Any discussion? All right. Molly, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. Thanks. All right. We will move on to the announcements. October 13th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's a regular school board meeting here in the community room and via electronic means. October 15th and 16th, there are no school. I assume that's MEA. October 20th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there's a regular school board work session in the community room and via electronic means. And October 27th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's another regular school board meeting in the community room. And here, oh, did I say that? Did I repeat the same one twice? October 20th, Tuesday at 5:30, there's a school board work session at the community room. And then on the 27th at 7:00 PM, there's a regular school board meeting here in the community room. And we'll move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenvik, is there any correspondence tonight?
Madam Chair, there is no correspondence tonight.
All right. Thanks so much. We'll move on to the communications to the board. Now is the time for citizens and employee representatives communication. And at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. I'm not seeing anyone. We don't have anything? Anyone lurking? That sounds ominous. Waiting? All right. We will move on. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which it contains the personnel report from September, yep, September 20th. Have a motion to move that forward?
It's all moved.
Laura, a second?
Second.
Lorian? Any discussion? All right. Molly, if you would, please.
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. Thanks. We'll move on to a fun part of being the board chair is the reading of the acknowledgements of contribution. And this is a resolution, so I will read it and then I'll ask for a motion to carry it forward. Acknowledgement of contributions, resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee to any trust created for the benefit of the students and for the benefit of the people thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $5,634.92. The detailed background, value and kind. Donations of face masks was made to Valley View Elementary by Barb Holmes for staff needs, estimated value of $110. Donation of school supplies was made to Highland Elementary by Optum Technology for student needs, estimated value $5,000. Donation of granola bars, popcorn, and popcorn was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Xena Stenvik for staff thanks, estimated value of $524.92. Total fiscal year 2020, 2021 monetary contributions to date, Could I get a motion to move this forward, please?
It's all moved.
We'll give it to Lorian. Second?
Second.
There it is. There you go, Molly. Any discussion?
I'll comment. I know that just really appreciate again our generous community members, business and personal, and especially the, you know, the masks for our staff. I think it's just really, just great to see our community supporting our teachers and staff who are in our schools right now. So thanks to our community for that.
Sounds like a pretty good deal. They get the masks and the granola bars and that for them.
Yes.
Laura, were you going to say something?
I was pretty much going to say the same thing. Very appreciative of the support that our district gets. And the masks for the, for the staff is, is really generous.
Great. Agreed. Thank you so much to all the members of our community who support us in various ways as well. Can we get a roll call on this one, Molly?
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. Great. We'll move on to discussion reports and information items. First is reports from members of the board. And we'll start with Director Palmer.
Ah, I had a feeling it was going to be me tonight.
You got the new jacket going. Got the good look going.
I mean, it's a fairly short report this evening. I did attend the work session last week. I believe there was also a policy subcommittee as well. And thank you very much for your time, Superintendent Stenvik. We had quite a bit of discussion on our needs with 916 and looking to the future. That's it.
All right. Great. Lorian?
Yep. I was at the work session last week and the chair meeting prior to that, the chair meeting prior to this meeting. And I've had several conversations with community members, specifically kind of talking about how the first several days of school have gone. And I will say I have received really excellent feedback from parents at all grade levels, elementary, middle, and high school, that they've been very impressed so far with how the distance learning has been. So they're saying that staff are engaged, students are learning and interacting with their peers, and the parents who have reached out to me have been very pleased. So kudos to our team.
Molly?
Thanks, Natty. I attended the Subcommittee on Policy meeting last week as well as the work session. And I've also had several conversations with some of the parents in our district and also several of the teachers just as our kids are getting back to school. And I know Lorian was kind of reporting out as a board member, but just as a parent, I want to say the extra communication that we're getting is so much appreciated. Just kind of laying things out and letting us know what to expect has been really helpful. So again, kudos to our team. Thank you all. That's it.
Yeah. I echo that from a personal level and what I'm hearing from other parents in the district is props and good communication, I think. That's one thing we can control right now. Not a lot, but it is one thing we can control. And I'm thankful that you guys are working so hard to do that. So thank you for that. Like everyone else here, I was at the work session. I think our policy meeting was actually before our last board meeting, but I'm trying to remember that. So I don't know. So Don will fix all our votes. He'll tell us when it was. I've been to a couple of chair meetings. I was able to team up with Lorian for some video shoots for communications to our community, which was entertaining to watch us try to be good on camera. And I think Laura and I and Molly, we were also at the North Park Tour, correct?
I was not able. I was not able to make it.
Molly and I were at the North Park Tour. And Jill Larkin. Thank you.
Thank you, Natty.
Yeah. Thank you to Superintendent Stenvik and Director Hennigens for leading us and showing us all the great work that's happening over there. It was really impressive, and I can't wait for the community to see it soon. At least see it virtually, right? So share with you all that this community has built together. Superintendent Stenvik, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. Metro area superintendents continue to meet regularly today. Susan Klammer, the state epidemiologist, joined the meeting. She answered questions about such things as vaccines, the flu season, and what happens when we have a combo, disproportionate impact that COVID-19 has had on our diverse communities, mitigating athletic competitions. And then the Mayo Clinic has released a new COVID-19 national dashboard that she shared the link with, and it's on their website. So it was interesting. Last week, the E-12 administrative team met, and we are preparing for the student groups that will be on campus next week at all of our schools. And of course, our three-year-old program is already onsite in a hybrid model. And so, as you can imagine, there are many, many moving parts to flesh out. And the team has really come together to tackle some, those many, many moving parts. And as mentioned, filming has begun for the virtual ribbon-cutting video, and that will be for Columbia Heights High School and the North Park Elementary. Very exciting. That should be released sometime in October. And I'm sure many people have heard that the State High School League has approved football and volleyball for competition this fall. So that is happening. Last week, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee met, and I joined the meeting. And this year, we will have two parent co-chairs. And they are looking forward to coming to present to the school board in February. I had a great conversations with Member Palmer. Thank you so much for your time. And of course, we continue to have weekly phone calls with the Commission of Education. And that provides us, the school district, with guidance, up-to-date guidance for each of the districts. That's it.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. We will move on to Strategic Direction B, improving our student academic achievement and career and college readiness with Directors Tuckroll and Frye.
Frye.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here with the Director of Special Ed, Dr. John Frye, to share about the district's progress on Strategic Direction B. So looking back at last year, at our progress on this area. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and focusing in on our core values of excellence, collaboration, and innovation tonight. This is an informational update, so no governance question will follow. Strategic Direction B is part of our strategic roadmap, and it is improving each student's academic achievement and career and college readiness. So we'll begin by looking at personalized learning. The first metric in this area really focuses in on the teacher's engagement and professional development around technology integration. In the year 2018, 2019, we were in intervention. And this year, we are all the way up to vision. Due to the pandemic and our move into distance learning, all of our, 100% of our teachers engaged in professional development around technology integration this past spring. The next two metrics are looking at the teacher's use of data to provide students with feedback as well as establishing norms for digital learning. The two tools used to measure these are a survey that we were unable to give last spring due to the pandemic. But we do have informal data, which really shows a lot of our teachers completing this. But we will have more formalized data this year as we will include this in a student survey as well as a teacher survey this fall and spring. The next area in this direction is PLCs focused on academic achievement. And the first metric looks at grade-level department PLC rubric and artifacts. And we were about at 90% last year. We were almost right at 90 there, progressing. And we really measured that every month. We met with the principals who brought in artifacts and evidence from the PLCs and really analyzed the implementation of PLCs in the district. One area that we found we needed to improve on is looking at our singletons. That are, that is teachers that are the only ones in their building who teach things. For example, the theater teacher at the middle school. She didn't have another person to PLC with. This year, we're trying something a little different. Looking at the circumstances we have, we have the ability to do virtual PLCs. So we're doing them vertically. So the theater teacher in the middle school and the high school are meeting together to look at student achievement and instruction. So we're excited about that opportunity. That could also help move us to vision. The next two look at students showing annual academic growth, both in reading and in math. And this is measured by the FastBridge assessment, which is given in the fall, winter, and spring to our students. In the year 2018, 2019, you can see the measurements in reading under baseline and intervention for math. Unfortunately, we were unable to give the FastBridge last spring. But we did put what our growth was from fall to winter with our students. We are currently working on the FastBridge assessment in kindergarten through eighth grade, and will be completing our fall assessments by the end of this month. The next three measures in this area focus in on students meeting grade-level standards in reading, math, and science. And that is based upon the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment, the MCA. And we did not give the MCA last year due to the pandemic, so we don't have data in that area either. And the last one is, that I will present on, is looking at the students in the district since eighth grade meeting the college readiness benchmarks. And this really focuses in on SAT. We unfortunately did not give the SAT in the spring. That was not an opportunity we have. So we don't have the data for that metric, but we are giving it this fall. So students have been contacted, seniors, and have the opportunity to take the SAT on October 14th in district if they choose to do so. So we'll have data after that point. And I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Frye to share about the next two metrics.
Right. Hey. Good thing, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. I get the opportunity to talk about special ed. And the first metric there is specific to reading. As you can see, we had fall-to-winter growth, similar to the previous academic information that Director Tuckroll had shared using the FastBridge. And we were still in the high concern. As you can see, we went from intervention to high concern with special education students meeting or exceeding their annual growth target. And these are students who either grow to, grow at moderate levels, very aggressive levels are kind of where they need to be. And so I think it's important to note that we are making growth. We're moving over. Again, it's fall-to-winter growth, so we're hoping to have that data from fall to spring to really truly see the growth in our reading area. And also with math, we are still in the intervention piece for that, for students meeting or exceeding their annual growth target. I think we're right around 35% from the data I got this morning. So we have students who are still growing, but we still have some work to do in these two areas. But I'm hopeful that those will continue to grow as well. And the next piece to this is overall in regards to our strategic direction B, where unfortunately, overall scores were unavailable due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and that's specifically to those MCAs that we were not able to give, as well as that fall-to-spring growth data for FastBridge. And so some things we're doing to raise that bar and raise that level, we are going to, as was noted earlier, is we're implementing our PLCs for year two. And we're having district-wide elementary PLCs across grade levels. We've got that vertical alignment amongst the subject areas in the secondary level. And we're, we've got a development of a district's implementation guide, strategy guide, which I think is really important for this distance learning, as well as when we're transitioning back to in-person learning. For special, we have a curricula in Sunday program based in Gordon-Gillingham that we will be implementing in year two at the elementary and then implementing at CEA or Columbia Academy to kind of increase those scores as well as increase the ability, those students' ability to read, look phonics, keep awareness, and what have you. We are also expanding our professional development for heights at home with staff. And we are also deepening our professional development with staff through their PD pathways. And we've got a myriad of different options for people and teachers to really kind of dive into deeper in regards to professional development. I know I'm leading the accommodation and modification specific to our heights for home. So it's exciting to kind of do some research and to really share that with our staff members specific to students with disabilities. And how do we increase that, those accommodations and modifications? So it's, it's very exciting work. And so with that, do you have any questions for myself or Director Tuckroll?
Questions? Got a couple thinking faces. Oh, Molly.
Yep.
I'm sorry. Is that okay?
No, go ahead.
Sorry, guys. I'm just curious a little bit about the SAT. There was a conversation on social media with some of the parents, and one of them followed up with me directly. Just had some questions about whether or not it's a requirement for our students before they graduate, just if you can clarify that, and also whether or not we're still paying for it. And I'm sorry if you said this in the presentation and I didn't catch it.
Thank you. No, we didn't. It is not a requirement for graduation. It is an opportunity which we provide for our students. So there is not a cost associated with it. We are providing also a lot of information about the safety protocols and what we'll have in place, but the decision really is up to the student and their family.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Lorian?
No.
Was that deleted?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Laura?
Actually, I had a question about the growth targets for, for reading and the math in special ed. And I was wondering whether or not we had any data as far as like our neighboring districts or statewide and how we're, how we're progressing or comparing.
I know in regard to the MCA data, we have from obviously not this past year, but the previous year statewide, where for the reading, special ed students are around 45, at 45% for the state of Minnesota. And whereas I believe last year we were around 23%, so we have some area to grow there. And for math, it was quite lower in regards to about 30, I think it was 31% for the special ed students passing the math or meeting those math standards across the state of Minnesota with MCAs. So we have the state stuff in regards to our peers, our neighboring districts. I do not have that available right now. But we have the MCA data to kind of guide us and lead us.
Yeah. It really hurts not having that, that extra data. But I know that as far as special education, it's so individual that, that trying to figure out a one-size-fits-all doesn't necessarily work. But, but I know that you guys are doing a great job over there. We've got a, we've got some wonderful teachers and, but it's nice to, nice to know how we're, we're doing this comparison to the, our, of the statewide and national goals.
Yeah.
Can I make a brief point of clarification?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
So with assessments, we look at achievement, which is, you know, that one MCA score. And we also look at growth, which are our internal, not public assessments, which is the FastBridge that Director Tuckroll mentioned. One thing we noticed with the growth that we, that we were able to capture before we all were sent home last spring is that Director Frye and his team implemented a new reading curriculum and, you know, testing out new reading curriculum. And we did see that growth for reading last year from, from fall to winter. And so we're really looking forward to that implementation of that Sunday curriculum in special education. And I think that Director Tuckroll can correct me if I'm wrong, but we will, we're trying to look at fall to fall, you know, since we're doing the assessments right now. So we won't, you know, it's not MCAs and that because it's an internal assessment, we're not able to compare directly to our neighbors.
Well, I prefer looking at growth rather than just an overall snapshot in time. We want to see steady progress.
It seems promising, the Sunday curriculum.
All right. Well, thank you. We will move on to the opening of school buildings. Updates with Directors Dunkle and Principals Robleski, Burkis, Jenke, Sasek, and Coolman. And if we were at a Heights football game, we would say, that's a host of Highlanders. Sad little tear. Oh, we're going to get football back.
Good evening. Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. This evening, I'm here, as was mentioned, with all of the principals of Columbia Heights Public Schools to share with you the opening of the school year. Our mission for Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And this evening, I think that you'll hear that we are starting off the year strong with every single one of our core values, community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. This is informational only. There are no governance questions for you this evening. Let's start with community education, shall we? Our adult enrichment, you'll see in this picture that we have classes through our adult enrichment program that are onsite. Some are on Zoom. Some are a hybrid of those, such as this class that's, that's shown in the picture, also with our yoga classes. So we do have a variety of ways of engaging learners of all ages in our district. Also, our adult basic education program at 4111 Central, still a free program for adults that are learning English, working on their GED or such. That is by and large taught through distance learning. They've also done distribution of devices and hotspots, similar to how we have in our school with pre-K 4 through grade 12 with pre-K four through grade twelve. In early childhood, next week, we start our ECFE program. We're doing that as a hybrid with using multiple rooms to spread people out. And last week, our pre-K three program began in a hybrid stage. Our mini adventures program, we have nine children in two rooms or spaces for nine. We still have a couple of spots available. If there's any three or four-year-olds interested in participating. Adventure Club after school, we still have spots available at Highland, North Park and Valley View. If parents are interested in children getting out of the house and having some safe peer interaction time. We're also providing really in very much partnership with the principals at Highland, North Park, Valley View and Columbia Academy. Childcare during the school day for the critical care workers' children. And then Encore is going to start in early October. Now I'll hand the floor over to Principal Roblesky.
Good evening. Chair Person Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, good evening. Tonight, I'd like to talk about, we had three events that happened at the high school. And the first one that we are really excited about was we had a ninth grade orientation, which we were able to bring in our ninth graders in groups, small groups into the high school and very small groups. And we practiced social distancing and mask protocols. And students were very receptive to that as we introduced them to real expectations and Zoom calls. The one thing I think that we were really excited about, well, we had two things. We had an open house for the tenth, eleventh and twelfth graders. That we also had to have a material pickup for everyone as well, an extra date due to some of the material being backed up and not being delivered just because of the backlog of, of school and supplies. So we had to add a material pickup instead of doing that with open house. And I think in the next picture, next PowerPoint slide, as you can see, it was a horrible rainy day and it rained the whole entire time. And I must say, we had close to five hundred students show up and as well as the staff and everybody was excited to be there and interact with one another. But more importantly, get the supplies that they needed to start the school off in, on the right foot. So we were very excited about that. We went over safety protocols as students stood in line out in the pouring rain. It wasn't a drizzle and everybody had a positive attitude. And I think, to be honest with you, I think everybody involved is just excited to get back to school no matter what it looks like. So we were very excited for the high school.
Yes, and from Columbia Academy, Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik and members of the board. We had two things that we kept in mind as we went through the first week back is to stay safe and stay connected. And we, we tried hard to stay true to that through the way we organized things. We did have a very big distribution of materials. We had loaded into bags, everything that students needed to do their distance learning. We were not selling uniforms or binders this year and that made a huge difference. We, we may have to at some point in the school year if we are, are back. But we gave our, our bags out in the parking lot and our, we had kind of the opposite of the high school. I think we all went home with sunburns that day. It was, it was a beautiful day. We had it over two days, actually about six hours of getting those out. It went very smoothly. And as you can see, we were masked and ready to be safe. But we also wanted to say that we, that we, we all belong and our web leaders pictured there en masse. We were out connecting with them and they are now connecting with our sixth graders. We've got so many great things going on with our kids, but I would echo what, what Principal Roblesky said. Every student that I've talked to has said basically the same thing. When do we get to come back to school? And of course, the answer is, you know, when it's safe and that we'd love to have you back and I know that they're looking forward to it. But we're virtual learning now. Things are up and running. We were from day one in our classes. And we are learning right along with the kids how to do that better each day. So yes, thank you.
You're muted.
Yeah, I had to unmute myself, right? This is not my first time using Zoom. Good evening. Well, you're, you're looking at pictures of essentially a new building. And so we've, we've had an awful lot of plates in the air over at North Park and among them is moving, moving into a new space. And I really have to give a lot of credit to the team, especially Brian Hennickens, on the budget management of this project. We were able to do everything, including all of the alts. So everything that, that, that we went into this, telling the community that we wanted to do, we were able to do at North Park. In fact, every square inch, with the exception of two small offices, was in some way renovated. And so it's, it really is like moving into a new building. And I also have to give a lot of credit to our custodial staff and to our teachers and, and staff as a whole. Moving in has been tough because, you know, things, things are mostly finished. But we really couldn't get into the building until that week right before workshop week. And, and there were a lot of things in the hallways, like everything. And teachers and custodial staff have done an amazing job getting the place in shape. So during workshop week, we did our materials distribution and we really pushed to get it finished during workshop week instead of the first week of school. So that we could spend that first week of school doing family conferences. And then I don't have the exact data in front of me, but I know the vast majority of our parents and families are actually able to make it in for parent conferences and also for their students to be assessed. And that was very strategic because those assessments give us the opportunity to personalize student instruction more precisely. And we're going to be following that up with an additional materials pickup, October first and second, with more personalized instructional materials. And on the left there, you see a photo of our emergency childcare, which is quite robust. At North Park, we have thirty-two students. We're so high because we have many staff people who are bringing their kids in. In fact, there are at least three staff people who have opened and rolled their children to North Park in many, for, for many reasons, but also it allows them, gives them the ability to take advantage of, of emergency childcare. But also what our teachers learned over the summer is that all of the pats on the back I was giving them in the spring were, were true. The work that our district have done in distance learning and Heights from Home is head and shoulders above what most of their districts have done. And after a little bit of digging this summer with colleagues and, and friends in the metro area, many of our teachers have, have discovered what a great job they've done. And that's only improved this fall. I am very proud of the work that we're doing. And, and I really thank you, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, for your support in giving us, allowing us to have this new workspace and also giving us the flexibility to do really good things for kids.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, I'd like to give a shout out. I think this person is Danielle Berg. She's our superstar at Valley View. As we entered into the process of planning for this year, she volunteered to organize and order all of the supplies for Valley View. She also went out of her way, knowing that Jeff and Michelle, our principal, Sasek and Principal Jenke needed some support too. She volunteered to order all their supplies. So she went above and beyond and I wanted to give her some kudos for doing such a great job. So please congratulate Danielle Berg. As we moved on, we did something a little different. We decided to do something called orientation sessions. So we brought in families very, according to the CDC guidelines and MDE for orientation sessions, a thirty-minute conference with their teacher. We worked on establishing relationships, learning how to use the technology we had. Many of our students were new to one-to-one. And it was also an issue we had last year. So we wanted to go slow to, to go fast and really built in the capacity for our families to engage and log on and, and use the tools that we have. During that time, we also did benchmark assessments. All but fifty-four, I believe, of our students completed their benchmark assessments and some of those students were new, so they haven't. So it was, it was ever-changing because we were getting new kids on the way. It was very neat to see. So obviously, like all of the other principals have echoed, our families are wanting to get back into the building. They're there, they're, they're meeting and building those relationships that are so important. Valley View prides itself on the community involvement and this, this shown through. We had all but seven of our families show up for this event. So it was wildly successful, beyond our dreams. And it was safe. Like I said, we, we had to come inside this day. It was raining outside. It was also the day that it was unworldly cold. So we were kind of blessed that it was raining a little bit, that we had to go inside, but it was very successful. Next slide, please. And then you can see, we, we are starting our learning. So we were able to engage right away. A majority of Valley View teachers are teaching from their classrooms. We made sure that that was open to them. That is their space or our space, as I say. And they're in there and they're working. So it's neat to see. As you can see, they are masked up. We are being conscious of our social distancing and, and practicing the protocols that we need to. And in the middle aspect is a Zoom meeting. So we are priding ourselves on really engaging the students and kind of hooking them, if you would say, into learning with some fun, engaging activities and then really diving into learning after that.
Great. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. Highland also held virtual open houses over Zoom for our families. We did that on Thursday of workshop week as planned. Our supply and device pickup was delayed. We were, excuse me, originally going to distribute devices and supplies on September third and fourth. However, due to materials not arriving on time, we did delay distribution until the eighth through the eleventh. We also had amazing turnout. On the first day, on the eighth, we had over half of our students and families come and pick up materials. So we were very pleased. There were some long lines, but people were very patient and we had a tremendous amount of staff to help people get everything that they needed. Highland is also an emergency childcare site. We're currently serving seventeen students at Highland. So we have a few photos of students doing their learning, interacting with staff. Our daily schedule at the three elementary schools is, critical care is from seven-thirty to two-thirty daily. We start with breakfast at eight AM. Zoom morning meetings start for all students at eight-thirty. And then they move into morning instruction and work time. We have lunch served for the critical childcare at eleven-thirty. And then students take a break until noon and then they start their afternoon work until two-twenty, when they're dismissed for the day. This is just a, kind of a picture of some of the things that are happening during emergency childcare. We are serving hot breakfast and lunch. The children are also able to get outside on the playground for some breaks or in the gym when we have poor weather. And also just as Principal Coolman was showing for Valley View, we do have some staff that are, who have chosen to teach from home. But we have a number of Highland staff who are teaching from school. So this is one of our teachers doing a Zoom lesson from her classroom. Also, over the first few weeks of school, we have had a few staff in service as well as staff meetings, which have occurred over Zoom. And we had our first PTO meeting on September seventeenth over Zoom and we had amazing attendance. I was very pleasantly surprised and also lots of children that joined in on the Zoom meetings, helping their parents get started. We are grateful to the students, family and staff for our collaborative and engaging start to the school year.
Alright, any questions? Laura?
I just have a comment. I, everybody just did such a wonderful job of organization and getting the supplies out. I was, I was absolutely amazed at how quick the process went. I, I actually had to pick up supplies for my daughter over at Columbia Academy and boy, it, they were slick, very impressive. And also I am able to observe some of the instruction during the day. And I can tell my, my student is actually very engaged. I was very excited to see her doing jumping jacks. And I didn't expect that. So she was participating even in the gym class. And that just, I mean, I think, I think we're on the right track here. And thank you very much for all your hard work and trying to anticipate all of the, all of the moving parts. And, you know, building the airplane in the air. I, I really like that analogy. So, good job.
Molly.
Natty?
I see Molly.
Thank you. I know I've said this several times since the spring, but I think this is one of the first chances that I've had to say thank you to all you principals directly. As you guys know, I'm a social worker. I work with many students in many different schools across the metro area. And I cannot tell you how impressed I am with all of you, your leadership and your teachers and what they are delivering in terms of quality education during this really challenging time. So thank you all.
Agreed. Yeah, Lorian and I are both shaking our head. We won't keep you here any longer because I know you have things to, to do this evening beyond this. But again, thanks from all of us here tonight. I think we are looking around, create, having meaningful eye contact about how, how much you guys mean to us and your leadership for our district. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, another exciting topic is Save the Music Grant and this will be Director Tuckroll and Principal Jenke. Am I saying that right? Jenke, okay, alright, great.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here tonight with the principal of Highland Elementary, Principal Michelle Jenke, to talk about a wonderful opportunity that we had at Highland Elementary, the Save the Music Grant. Our mission in Columbia Heights of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong and all succeed, and focusing in tonight on innovation and collaboration. This is an informal presentation, so no governance question will follow. We were presented with the Save the Music Grant opportunity and we went for it for Highland Elementary and it was an intro to music grant. So we do have Save the Music Foundation already in our school district. It was really focused in on pre-K through five students and supporting them with the general music instruction and standards, with a big focus on the active music making and engagement from all students. The requirements included being a public school, having at least one full-time certified music teacher. And I'm sure Michelle will share later, but we have more than one there. So we have a robust program at Highland. And having instructional time set aside in the student's schedule for music. It was pretty impressive. This occurred during the summer and the collaboration of the elementary music team was amazing. So they all are listed here. Two of them work at Highland. The rest are from Valley View and North Park. And they all came together and decided that they wanted to apply for Highland, looking at their number of staff that are there and the needs that they have. And they worked together this summer to complete the application in a very thoughtful way. So a big shout out to them. They did an amazing job. Those are pictures of ukuleles there, which are part of the grant that you'll hear about. But one of the most exciting parts for all of those teachers there. So I'm going to pass it over to Principal Jenke to share about the grant.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. I am also just really pleased about being selected for the Save the Music Grant at Highland. It was kind of a whirlwind from Director Tuckroll asking me to write a letter of support. I did it day of, submitted it off to her via email and by that afternoon, we had the grant. That's how quick it was. And so it was even before the grant closed, we had our application submitted and we had received it. So it was pretty shocking to see that, actually. The grant package is twenty-two thousand dollars worth of developmentally appropriate and culturally relevant instruments and other resources, including a digital piano, acoustic guitar, orf instruments, world drums, recorders, handheld percussion, boom whackers, classroom set of ukuleles, method books and program support for ten years. We are getting monthly newsletters. We've actually gotten several, we've gotten a lot of information from the Save the Music Foundation already and support from them to make sure that we received all of our materials and that we're receiving the newsletters. So this is a picture of one of the Highland music rooms. So this is part of the unpacking. So you'll see the boom whackers kind of in the front of the picture and some of the orphan instruments in the back. We were really low in supply of boom whackers, just even for our regular music room. But as Director Tuckroll stated last year, we, we had originally two fied teachers in our specialist rotation. Starting last year, we went to two music teachers with the kind of creation of a split between a music and band position. So rather than have a part-time band teacher without filling the other side of the job, we were able to hire on a full-time music slash band teacher. So we did create a second music classroom at Highland down on the first floor. So Mr. Keesley is our new band music teacher. He works primarily with kindergarten and first grade, so he's down on the same wing. It's also a shorter distance for students to walk to his classroom, but we were really ill-prepared to start that classroom because we lacked supplies for it. So Lindsay Borski and Mr. Keesley needed to share instruments and there was a lot of passing back and forth. With, by receiving this grant, we're able to have instruments in both classrooms. We're also able to have full sets of at least thirty instruments, thirty orf instruments. So we have a full set. As I said, we were, we were able to add to our boom whackers. And so it's just really exciting, the amount of instruments, but also the other side is really developmentally appropriate and culturally relevant music curriculum that we were able to receive as well. And that material, the materials that we are receiving, we are doing some sharing between Valley View and North Park. So, there will be, once we're back on campus, we'll be shifting some materials over to kind of share the wealth of the other two schools as well. So, we'd like to say thank you to the Save the Music Foundation. We are just delighted that we were selected, and it's going to go a long way to support our music program at not only Highland, but as well as Valley View and North Park. Any questions that you have?
Can I make a comment?
Sure. I was kind of expecting.
Yeah, everybody was expecting me to make the comment. Congratulations to all of you and to the team of music teachers who put this together. I think it's just incredible to have this opportunity for our students. I can't wait till they're all back in the classroom, being able to use everything and see what they can do distancing as well. I think it's amazing to have a curriculum that's appropriate for our kids and something that they can connect with and see themselves in and participate in and to have, just have the ability to do this. It's incredible. And for the Save the Music Foundation to select us again, I just, we couldn't be more thankful and grateful for that. So, thanks to the team who wrote the grant and put that together. I can't wait to see the next performance in the new performing arts spaces.
Wouldn't it be nice if we could see them in the Performing Arts Center?
Yes. I would like to see a kindergarten orf concert here, very quickly.
I was like the blocks. I had to lean in to see, what are those blocks? Oh, okay. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you so much again for your hard work in getting that grant and writing it all up. And we appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Yeah, you too. Thanks. We'll move on to Project Lead the Way Grant with Director Tuckroll and Principal Sossick.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbeck. I'm back again, but another great opportunity that we had tonight with the principal of North Park Elementary, Jeff Sossick. Our mission in Columbia Heights of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and focusing on similar values as the last one in collaboration and innovation. This is an informational presentation tonight. Last time we presented about North Park, we discussed our next steps in moving North Park into a STEM school. And so, we've taken some of those steps, and that led us to the Project Lead the Way Grant. We really began looking at identifying curriculum and professional development. And we started by researching neighboring STEM schools. We talked to STEM leaders, we talked to families, as well as teachers, to talk about what they're using and how it's working. We also received some guidance and support from a STEM leader in Minnesota, who works closely with the Department of Education, as well as neighboring universities. And he really showed us a bigger picture of STEM and how it can be implemented in an elementary school. He will be coming back in November to support the North Park staff. Then we looked at Project Lead the Way. It's currently a program we have in Columbia Heights, and we were interested in seeing the elementary version of it. And then we connected with the Science Museum. We use engineering as elementary in our elementary science programs, and we want to see the opportunities they have, as well as the professional development. And we really were connected with Project Lead the Way. The teachers and the admin, when we looked at it, it really had a good connection with literacy, with math. It really showed our students in the curriculum as well. And so, we dug into that one a little more, and we saw that it would also support a lot of the work that we've been doing in Columbia Heights. We currently have Project Lead the Way at Columbia Academy. We have three courses there already. And we're looking at proposing a course next school year for Columbia Heights High School. I'm going to pass it over to Principal Sossick to talk about the opportunity we had.
And yeah, Project Lead the Way has been very gracious in affording us a grant. And really, I need to give a lot of credit to Director Tuckroll for procuring this grant. It was one of those situations where it was in the summer and Tara discovered the grant opportunity and texted me and said, hey, you know, we should do this. And I texted back, yeah, let me know what I need to do. And then I went camping for a week, and I came home and she said, great news, we got the grant. So, really, Tara did all the work. And thank you very much for that. So, what this is going to provide for us, it's really going to get us off the ground with a legitimate pilot. It's going to provide professional development. We are going to be sending three of our teachers. We're going to be sending Carolyn Bang from second grade and Katie Hale from fourth grade. And then also, our tech integration specialist, Jen Howesworth, is going to be doing the initial teacher training. And it also will provide us the opportunity to buy materials, to choose some units and modules and to pilot them, test them out during the second quarter of this year. And then after that, Jen Howesworth will then be able to go to the training to become a coach. So, we will have a trainer in-house by the end of this year to help train the rest of our staff. It also helps to pay for the participation fee. I mean, essentially, it gives us the opportunity to do a Project Lead the Way pilot for free. And so, we're very fortunate and very grateful to Project Lead the Way for that. So, our next steps, our core team of those three are going to be attending the training. They are distance training. They're all online. And that training, all three of them are going to attend in November. And then we will be piloting those modules. We haven't chosen which ones yet, but we will have to choose those before the training because they will be a central part of their training. And then we'll be doing the professional development for all staff starting in November. And we're also going to put together an evaluation process so that at the completion of those two modules, we want to be able to evaluate how it went to make sure that Project Lead the Way is the correct system for us to use and then also what our next steps would be. So, it's pretty exciting to see that we will be doing a pilot in the second quarter. And hopefully, by third quarter, we will be taking a look at what our next steps could be. So, thank you very much to Project Lead the Way, and thank you to Director Tuckroll.
Questions on this one or comments? I said it was kind of grants falling from the sky, right? It was just, we applied and there it was. Had to giggle. Mr. Sossick, I happen to know a guy, I'm married to him, just to clue you in, who's been teaching Project Lead the Way. I asked him how long. He said, I don't know, maybe eight years. So, he's a pro, so he would love to collaborate. He's a big North Park fan, so. And I know he has collaborated with other staff in the district too, so.
Well, at North Park, we are a big Mr. Severson fan.
He's got a great beard.
That's respectable.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
All right, thank you. You too.
We'll move on to the policy first reading, and that's me presenting, so thank you all. We were having our first reading. And the Subcommittee on Policy looked through the following items. 419 Tobacco-Free Environment Possession, Use of Tobacco, Tobacco-Related Devices and Electronic Delivery Devices. 422 Policies Incorporated by Reference. 522 Title IX Sex Non-Discrimination Policy Grievance Procedure and Process. 522 is the form. 534 is the unpaid meal charges. 535 Service Animals in Schools. 541 Tele-Related Services Policy. And 902, the Use of School Facilities. And these policies will appear on the agenda for future approval. Now, these will be available for the public to also look at, should they inquire on, they can find them on our website, correct?
That's correct.
And so, if people have questions about any of these policies, they can contact myself or Superintendent. Superintendent takes. Yeah, you know what I mean. Superintendent Stenbeck. Apparently, my mouth is not working tonight. So, if you have any questions about those, go ahead and read through them. There's a couple of new policies on there, completely new ones to look through, so. Any questions? All right. We will move on to action items. The first one is Director Hennigens, and he's going to tell us about the Authorization of Bid Publication.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbeck. This evening for action, I'm presenting Columbia Heights High School Area Separation Bid Authorization. So, I'll give a little context for that in a minute. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values this evening, excellence, collaboration, and integrity. So, like I said, this is a governance question. We'll be seeking approval for authorization to publish legal notice and solicitation of bids for the high school area separation project. I think it's the mask that makes it harder to speak.
It does.
So, before I get into the images, I just kind of want to give a little bit more context to this. So, during the bond referendum projects for the high school, obviously, we all know we added a band room onto the building. When we are adding onto an existing building, there's code that changes over the years. And there's things that, you know, we get grandfathered in. Our building gets grandfathered in, and we don't need to meet that existing code. One of those is fire area separation. And we cannot exceed a certain number of square footage based on things within the building. And there's a formula to calculate what that square footage is. And in our high school, when we added on the band room, we needed to bring that part of the code or the building up to that part of the code. And we were over double, we exceeded our square footage by over double in some areas of the high school. So, because we discovered this late in the process, the state and the city allowed us to still receive our permit so we could add the band room on. But we had to agree to, by July 1st, 2022, upgrade and make that part of our, the existing high school meet the fire code area separation. So, upon approval of this, what we'll be doing is going out for, or posting in the paper, legal notice authorization. You'll get this authorization to post legal notice for bid for putting these firewalls in or these area separation walls. And what the imagery looks like, just kind of give you a broader picture. So, in this image, on the left-hand side here, we see building number one, BLG1. That's where we added the band room on. And that dark, very dark, larger black line, that is a firewall that we already added in with the building project. So, it's a two-hour fire separated wall that, you know, takes that area off of the square footage of the next section, which is building number two. And these green lines are the ones that we have to add in. So, we have to create separation throughout the building and not exceed a certain square footage. And so, this is ground level, and you can see down below here, the Family Center area. And that dark black line, we already have two-hour fire separation there. And so, these are the things that, in green again, are what we're working on. And it has to go through all three levels of the building. So, from the basement all the way up, that firewall needs to be intact. And so, whether it's going, there's certain rules, whether it's going through, you know, the duct work system, HVAC system, or there's electrical conduit penetrations in the firewall, there's certain caulking that has to go into place. So, there's, those are the things that we need to implement. So, it's a very extensive project throughout the building. And we're working with MLEA Architects, the same architectural firm that we worked with on the bond projects for the high school. And we're working with Carl Sanderson, the same construction management firm that we worked with on the bond projects for this, as it was a result of those projects. And again, this is just another floor of the project. So, this is the second floor. So, like I said, it has to continue all the way up through the building. So, this evening, again, we're asking for approval for bid authorization. And again, this is just a post and request bids for this project.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Any questions? About the project itself or the bid process, I suppose?
Yes, so I'll bring, once we post for bid, after we receive authorization, we'll receive the bids. We'll bring as an information the bid results, and then, and depending on how things go, we'll bring it to action.
All right. It looks like there are no questions. So, oh, we need a motion here first. So, if we could get a motion, move this forward.
No motion.
Loriann, a second?
Second.
Laura. Now, any questions? All right, hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote.
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. Great. We will move on to insurance renewal. Director Sunstrom, sorry, I didn't introduce you. I was looking, I should have known it was you. I was looking down to see who you were.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbeck. I have an action item here for renewal of the property and liability insurance for the district. So, at the last work session on September 15th, we have Steve McElpin present from the Kelvin Agency. And he went over extensively all of the coverages that the district has and each line item and how much each one had gone up. And the renewal for the property liability and other insurances is October 1st of 2020 through October 1st of 2021. And the total package is 189,821 that we're asking you to approve tonight. So, that is the action item that I have before you.
All right. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
No motion.
Loriann, second?
Second.
I'll give this one to Molly.
Give it to Molly.
We'll give her the benefit of the.
I can't find my mute, sorry.
The benefit of the delay too, you know? All right. Now, questions on this?
I have some questions.
Thank you, Loriann.
Yeah, so just as Director Sunstrom said, we discussed this really at length at our work session. So, I appreciate Steve McElpin coming in and Denise Yu as well, giving us all the details. And I think we decided, or I shouldn't say decided, we discussed at that meeting to have our deductible be a $25,000 deductible. Is that reflected in this premium?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then we know that there is an increase, a significant increase in our premium related to one, including additional coverage for the band room, North Park additions, and to make sure that we are more appropriately covered, as well as a significant increase in our liability insurance as well, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that clarification for people who are watching. Other questions? All right, let's do a roll call vote, please, Molly.
All right. Am I muted still?
Yes, you are. You are not muted right now, sorry.
Okay. I was confused. It won't click over back to my Zoom.
Hey, Molly, can I give Don a second?
Never mind.
Okay. All right, thanks, Don. Molly, go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm a little, my computer kind of froze in one spot, so. But Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to the Pay 2021 Preliminary Levy. Once again, Director Sunstrom.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbeck. I have before you an action item for the 2020 payable 21 preliminary levy. And this is for fiscal year 2021, 2022. And that's hard to say, even with my mask off. So, I'm asking you to approve this levy. We went over this at the work session last week on September 15th. And at this time of the year, in September, the board has always taken action to pass a maximum levy. It just means that in order to capture any changes that are made, because the MDE is making changes right now. They have a new computer system, and they're still working on. They have a new computer system and they're still working on some of the formulas and changes. So we've had a few runs since last week and they're still working on it. And Brian and I are working also still to refine the LTFM. So the presentation that Brian just did isn't included on this levy. If any parts of that can be included in LTFM. So I'm requesting that you approve the preliminary levy tonight at the maximum in order to capture any changes up or down in the levy that will be finalized in December. So now between now and December, we have opportunities to make changes to various items on the levy. So I'm asking for your approval on that right now. The levy that's in your packet is an 11.27% increase. It was slightly up from last week. So, and it will change again, I'm sure, a few times before December.
All right. Can I get a motion to move that forward, please?
I'm moved.
I'm going to give that one to Laura. Can I get a second?
Second.
Molly, all right. Second is Molly. All right. I'm sure we have questions or comments on this one, as this is, you know, impacts taxpayers. We want to, you know, answer those questions. So who wants first question or comment?
Can I have first question?
Lorian, if you're okay with it, Laura chopping up the bit over there.
Lorian always asks all the right questions.
I have my reading glasses on so I can see the screen, so I can't see Laura over there. Sorry. Just, you know, with the 11% increase, I know we kind of talked about this before, there's still a lot of changes to be made yet. But can you just talk a little bit about what the primary factor is that's really resulting in that increase?
The main factor in this increase is the lease levy. The lease levy had a huge adjustment last year, $500,000 negative. It's been, this is the third year of this lease levy going up and down. So when Bernice was here a couple of years ago, it was levied incorrectly. And then last year, they took it away. So now there is a $509,000 change just on the lease levy line. And then the other areas that are increasing in the general fund are equity revenue and referendum revenue. And that is because our district is so far underneath the caps on referendum that other districts have, that we make it up in equity revenue. But even in that case, when that happens, the state usually reduces state aid in other areas. So we really don't have this big increase in revenue. It's just how the formulas work between state aid and levy.
So this increase really isn't like more funding for schools. It's really adjustments throughout, like how that funding is received.
Correct. It's adjustments in prior years because they'll adjust three years back. They'll look at actual and they'll take pupil units into account and as in the lease levy, they'll look at adjustments from two years back.
Thank you. And just to be clear, to people watching, this is a formula the state makes in order to create a decision, to create kind of a funding balance between what they believe a city or the community should be, the local community should be able to provide and what they're also willing to provide. Is that kind of a short snapshot into?
It's more than a formula. It's 40 pages of formulas.
Really make it understandable.
That I summarize for you into one page. So it's really, it's really a lot.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right. Let's move on to a roll call vote, please.
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. All right. On a happier note than Texas, Superintendent Goals for 2021.
Yes, Chair Severson, members of the board. At an earlier retreat work session, the school board members and myself were trained from MSBA, the Minnesota School Board Association, on establishing goals. And the board took the opportunity to, with this, with the new superintendent, to receive that training and act on it. And so from that training, the superintendent goals were created and established. And again, this is part of the contract, so it's a contractual obligation. And in addition, the goals were discussed at a previous work session. So this evening, I'm here seeking approval for the goals.
Great. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
I'm moved.
Lorian, second?
Second.
I know you guys are gun shy. And Laura. All right. Any discussion here?
Just to, kind of for people that are watching as well, I think it's important to note that the board really kind of discussed our obligation with our new superintendent, providing direction, goals, that we're all on the same page. And provided Superintendent Stenvik in her contract, the requirement to have goals and for the board to review and to monitor and to do check-ins throughout the year on that goal process as we help make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward and that Superintendent Stenvik, no, I didn't, is successful and supported through this role. And so really identifying the goals that we've identified as the board in terms of communication and equity and leadership to make sure that we have a way to have measurable feedback on those.
Molly, I see you're unmuted. Did you have something to say?
I was essentially going to say the same thing as Lorian already did. I don't need to keep everyone here later. Thank you.
All right. All right. Hearing no more questions. Let's do a vote, please.
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. Great. And our last action item for tonight is our school board goals. So in a similar sense, we've, for the, now the last couple of years, this will be our second year, desired to make school board goals that will help us continue in our growth as board members and our ability to do our roles of governance and connection with our community. And so we, I'm going to present here the three goals we have and then I'll ask for a motion to move it forward. So our three goals are, first, number one, having established a Subcommittee on Community Engagement, the board will focus on effectively utilizing the committee and implementing new strategies to engage our community in two-way communication. Two, having created a plan for ongoing collaborative evaluation of the superintendent, the board will focus on effectively implementing this plan while evaluating its usefulness and effectiveness. Three, in alignment with the superintendent's goals and the professional development of District 13 staff, the board will focus on growth surrounding the topic of equity. We will begin with reading and discussing the book, How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram X Kendi, and progress to other texts as time permits. So can I get a motion to move this forward?
I'm moved.
Laura? Second?
Second.
I'm giving, I'll give it to Molly. Sorry. She gets the electronic nod. I just can imagine it through the wires.
Yeah.
All right. Any discussion on this? I know we had a lengthy discussion, as we did about Superintendent's goals and our own goals at the work session last week, but any? Any comments?
I just have one comment. I really want to thank everybody for, you know, for putting this, I mean, I think, I believe we were all doing this personally, but being very purposeful and being able to really discuss this very openly in public. I think that's going to be a really good thing for us and very good for our district and as a group, I think. I look forward to working with everybody.
Yes, I do. I like the idea that we have goals and it shows that we want to be accountable to keeping ourselves growing and all these topics. They're important governance topics. So it's exciting to me to have this own measure of accountability with ourselves to continue to do those things. Like we see our staff and our administration doing, so. Molly? You're unmuted. Okay.
Just ready for a roll call.
Ready for that roll call.
That's it.
All right.
You good?
There, we're good. Thank you.
Okay. Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. Great. We'll move on to board topics. All right. This might be the first ever not board topics night thing. I'm not going to push my luck. All right. Having heard no more board topics, we will close the meeting at 8:21 PM.